Good evening, Upper Darby. Welcome to the May ninth, 2023 combined work session agenda and regular in-person and virtual meeting. The first item on the work session agenda is a pledge of allegiance by the students from Garretford Elementary School.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's give them a round of applause. Great job, great job. The second item on the work session agenda is a presentation by Mr. Alan Bridges, Garretford Elementary School Principal, titled Clear Touch Boards Demonstrations.
Before I get started, I just wanted to thank Asatua Marion for coming out and doing a great job with the pledge. For those of you that have not met, my name is Alan Bridges, and I have the privilege of being the principal of Garretford Elementary School. I'm currently in my 21st year with the Upper Darby School District. Tonight for our presentation, I wanted to highlight one of the many ways our district is moving our schools and our facilities forward. In the past few years, we have seen many awesome updates throughout the district and at Garretford. At Garretford, we now have brand-new windows throughout our building. Our playground has recently been resurfaced, and they are now in the process of building a brand-new state-of-the-art park. And every classroom has clear touchboards. I wanted to use tonight as an opportunity to highlight the clear touchboards and publicly thank the board and Dr. McGary for moving our district forward and giving our students the facilities and technology that they deserve. The clear touchboards, in a very short time, have proven to be a game-changer in our classrooms, and this video will show just a few of the many ways the boards will be used. If you could play the video.
The clear touch implementation really started with Bob Lewinsky, him trying to figure out a solution to the problem of our outdated whiteboards.
We used to have those whiteboards, and it was just really glitchy. You could barely hear what they were saying.
You could only have like one child or teacher touching it, working on it at one time.
And so they came across the clear touchboards and thought that it might be a good solution. They investigated it and thought it would be a good solution for Upper Darby School District.
We basically got an email that excited all of the teachers that we were getting these new clear touchboards that would basically replace the smartboards.
I really just like walked in the classroom, and it was there. I didn't expect it to be there. All I knew was that it was there now, and I like was excited to learn with it, but I didn't know like how.
At first, I just thought like it was just for watching things, but like then I found out all this cool features.
The favorite thing I like to see is the kids' reaction when they first interact with the board. They have the oohs and the ahs, kind of like I would have on a Christmas day if I go down and see my new TV.
The quality on the clear touchboards are much better than the old whiteboards.
The graphics are just so much better. It's not blurry. It rarely ever glitches. You can hear it really well.
The new science program, there's all of these really cool videos, and it's like these colors are jumping at them, and it's just, it's really cool to watch, and they're engaged at all times.
The board does make you go ooh and ah, right? But we want more than that. We want engagement. We want collaboration. We want kids to demonstrate their learning and sort of take over the classroom, and this board helps facilitate that.
When you are using the clear touchboard, the touchscreen operates as controlling the computer instead of the computer just controlling the screen. So like if I want to draw on it with just like my finger or the pen, it doesn't just happen on the board itself, it happens on the computer. So whatever I'm drawing on the board also appears on the computer.
And now with these new boards, almost the whole class can be up there at the same time, which is really cool.
One of the versions of the board we're buying allows the board to go flat.
When I like hit that remote and the screen goes up or down and then lays flat, like the children's faces are just like, oh, oh my God, that's so awesome. And then you can break it into quadrants where you can have pairs of students working on games, and we use the Snowflake app all the time where it's just interactive games that enhances all of their learning.
The Snowflake software allows it so kids can do activities, or they could be working on a project, and it allows the kids to interact, and they get really into that.
In math right now, we're learning about time, so there is a game that they love to play where they're matching an analog clock with a digital clock, and with their hands, they can do it all at the same time, and they're just dragging clocks to match the time. And then we also used it for money. They were counting the money and then like matching it to the, to the price tag in the piggy bank, and then even like there's a memory game that we play with the sight words, trick words, and all of that stuff. So you can use it for math, you can use it for ELA, you can use it for science, you can use it for anything. It's all wireless too, so you can connect through the PC. The teachers can display everything from anywhere all over the room, which is really cool. And then you can also like drop in wirelessly from the kids' computers as well.
You just like open the nap and type in a code and your computer's on the screen.
You're seeing what you're supposed to be doing on your computer on the big screen.
Multiple kids can connect to the board at the same time wirelessly, and the teacher can bring up different screens. The teacher still has control of the screen, so if they don't like something, they can take it off.
They already have so much that it does, you can do millions of things on it.
In 2023, everything is at everyone's fingertips. They're seeing it all around in their world, and now they're in these classrooms, and the kids are in awe every single day. Whether it's a new game that they're playing or a new activity we're doing all together as a class, they, they just love it. So I think that as we go forward and all the teachers and the students are learning more about the board, it's only going to become better.
I'm very excited because I think it's going to develop as we go, and I think there's just going to be so many new cool features to it. Yeah.
So special thanks to Mr. Jason Taylor for putting the video together. Jason always does an amazing job. Before I go, I'd also like to publicly thank Mr. David Neal for all his support the past few years as our school board building liaison. Mr. Neal attends all our monthly home and school meetings, our school events. He's even dropped off pretzels and treats throughout the year for the school. So we, we really appreciate having him in all our meetings, not only his willingness to help us plan events, but his willingness to answer questions from parents at any time. So thank you, Mr. Neal, for that. So in closing, I can't thank the board and Dr. McGary enough for helping support us bringing our schools forward, especially with the technology and the facilities. It really helps make some difficult jobs a little bit easier, so thank you.
Great job, Mr. Bridges. You have some really smart kids at Garretford. Listening to them describe the, uh, the clear touch, very, very impressive. Thank you for your work. The third item on the work session agenda is a presentation by Mr. Desmond Chisholm, Stonehurst Hills Elementary School Assistant Principal.
Good evening, board, cabinet, and community members. My name is Desmond Chisholm, and currently I am the Assistant Principal at Stonehurst Hills Elementary. Standing next to me is the wonderful Sherry Asbridge. She's one of our amazing autistic support teachers. Today, what you're going to see is you're going to see a video of our newly minted autistic support program. The title of the video is actually called Shooting for the Stars, and that title, Shooting for the Stars, came from another amazing autistic support teacher, Paige King, and that became the mantra for driving what we're trying to do with the autistic support program. So the reason that that works so well is, is because it kind of encapsulates like this collaborative effort we have of making sure that every student, including our autistic support students, gets an opportunity to shoot for the stars. So in the video, what you're going to see is you're going to see a combination of both the teachers as well as the students sharing their experience in our autistic support program. Sherry's going to kind of chime in once the video concludes, and she's going to give you a little more insight into what's happening in the video, as well as some of her personal experiences of being an autistic support teacher at Stonehurst. So without further ado, Shooting for the Stars.
Before this year, Stonehurst did not have an autistic support program. There was an autistic support program in the district at Primus Elementary School, but we have such a need in our district for more classrooms for more autistic support.
It was a whirlwind getting started. Starting a new program is, you know, not for the faint of heart.
It's different than when you teach Gen Ed. The classrooms needed like a whole bunch of different materials and stuff that is like unique for our students.
It takes a lot. It takes a lot of people, takes a lot of care, getting the space ready for the students, making sure that it's a safe space for students, that we have adults that work with the students, and we have five new teachers, five new classroom assistants, and a lot of kids who have their PCAs as well.
So we really started with making sure that we have the unique materials that each student needs to succeed.
Curriculum-wise, we actually had a new curriculum this year that everyone in the district was trained on, and we have another curriculum, VB, verbal behavior, that our students are working on, and it really hits all of the different students at all of their different levels.
Once we learned the programming and were taught it, you keep doing the programs with kids, and it just flies by.
It takes a lot to build it, but we've been, you know, one block at a time getting it up there.
It was definitely a challenge. We started from nothing, and we really have become into ourselves and who we are. Each classroom has a really unique group of students that are in it, that are at all different levels and are all amazing students.
They're all coming from schools around the district, and this is their first time here too, because this is the first year that the program is here.
And with the support of the team and, you know, the PCAs and the teacher assistants, we really have got to know all the students' strengths and weaknesses and figured out how we can help them best.
Coming to work every day, these kids are amazing.
The best part of my day is my students. When they are happy, it gets you through the entire day.
I feel the best part about my school year and this year is the acceptance from the staff and students. It really warms my heart.
Just bringing our kids back up from recess and seeing the other kids in the hallway who say like, oh, hi, oh, hey, like calling them by their name, or them saying, you know, like they don't talk to me, but we play a lot at recess because we have a lot of students who are minimally verbal or nonverbal, so they find other ways to communicate, which is really beautiful because they're kids, so they'll learn how to play. They go on field trips together, we go to assemblies together.
I have had two students that go into Gen Ed for a really large portion of the day.
I did an autistic walk last year, and I brought up the idea to the team, and they loved it.
And we wanted to make sure that the whole school was really involved. Since we are a new program, we want to make sure that the students understand that even though they're different, they're still a part of our school, and they're still amazing kids and amazing students.
We raised money for our program, we sold T-shirts.
Ms. King, she said that she would design the shirt. She was very happy about designing the shirts, and a lot of students bought shirts. We sold over 100 shirts.
So we went for a walk like sort of around the school and ended up and had a party in the playground just to celebrate everyone.
It was really a wonderful day where we got to see everyone wearing blue shirts and walking around together.
It was great, and all of our students did really good. Everyone else did great, and everyone was really accepting.
This was our first walk, and this is not going to be our last walk.
With the money that we've been able to fundraise with our WAF, we're looking towards putting that back into the program. It's been an adventure, but as we get to the end of the year, we're all like looking forward to starting a new year fresh with all of the stuff that we've learned this year, bringing that into next year too.
So I have been at many different, I've been at different schools. Stonehurst community was very welcoming to our, our students that came from Primus, Westboro Park, wherever they came from. The staff and students were absolutely so supportive, and when our students integrate into the regular education classroom, the other students are working with our students, helping them with that art project, helping them manipulate that music tool that the music teacher's using. That is so warming to my heart, for these kids to be integrated and be able to be welcomed into the community.
And just lastly, I really, I wasn't going to say this, but I do want to say, Dr. McGary, thank you so much for, you know, the administrative support we received above us to really make sure that we were able to acclimate these guys into our school community, because there were concerns originally that we weren't sure if we were going to be able to accommodate them. But I have to tell you, it has been seamless, it has been enjoyable, and it has been absolutely amazing to just see how the combination of our regular ed students and our autistic support students all merged together to become one. So thank you very much.
Both Alan and Desmond, thank, thank you for your comments. Just to, just to, it's easy to be a superintendent and, and you know, hear these things and take all credit, but the reality is, there's a lot of people. The smartboard, the clear touch technology was really born out of a meeting at Aronomic, and, and you know, we're appreciative of the team, Christine, Dr. Manfree, Josh Rehack, the Aronomic teachers to help us pick that right technology, and Desmond, you know, your comments, I appreciate it, but I would be remiss if I didn't say to Ed Marshallack, who's the assistant superintendent overseas, Student Services, and all the supervisors out of Special Education who put in a lot of time and effort to support you. It's a beautiful presentation. I would love to take all the credit for it, but it's, it's not all me. It's a total team effort here. There's a lot of really talented people, and what you're doing with the kids in the classroom is really special. So thank you, and thank you, Desmond and Alan, for your leadership.
Great job. Thank you for your dedication and care to our autistic students. That was fantastic. I enjoyed that. The final item on the work session agenda is a presentation by State Representative Gina Hackett Curry for the 2023 PMEA All-State Festival Citations.
Good evening, everyone. On the, on behalf of the House of Representatives of Pennsylvania, I'm here tonight to give three great citations for students who have been chosen to participate in the Pennsylvania Music Festival, which is a great honor. So I hope they're here tonight. I first want to bring up Emily Fispach. Emily is a student musician at Upper Darby, and she has been chosen to perform at the Music Festival, Pennsylvania Music Educators Festival, and I have to say that she was chosen as Upper Darby School District in All-State Orchestra as a Part I violinist, and congratulations. Is Emily here? The second student is Braheen Amadia. Braheen Amadia? I hope I'm not saying it wrong. Come on, you can come this way. Braheen was, has been selected to represent Upper Darby School District in the All-State Concert Band as a Part III clarinettist. And the last student, but certainly not least, is Steven Gard. A student musician here at Upper Darby, chosen to represent Upper Darby School District in an All-State Concert Band as a Part I flutist. Congratulations.
Before we call tonight's meeting to order, Dr. McGary, will you please outline the public participation procedures, sir?
Yes, the board continues to hold both in-person and virtual meetings. Anybody who's participating virtually this evening, tonight is a comment-only meeting. You can provide your email comments to boardmeeting@upperdarbstd.org. You can also phone them in at 610-789-7200, extension 2000. Please make sure you provide your name and address and the specific report you'd like to comment on. The board will take that into consideration before moving forward. Virtual comments or phoned-in comments will be taken after in-person comments. Those who are here in person can come to the microphone, provide your name and address, and you can provide a comment at the time of a specific report, and the board will take that into consideration. Anybody who wanted to provide general comments, both in-person and virtual, virtual comments had to be submitted prior to 7:30 and labeled as general comments. Anyone who was here in person needed to sign in in the speaker list at seven, prior to 7:30 for their general comments to be, be heard. All comments are to three minutes, and the board will take that into consideration and become part of the record before moving forward.
Thank you, Dr. McGary. The regular in-person and virtual meeting of the Upper Darby School District Board of School Directors will please come to order. It was a closed session this evening from 5:30 PM until 7:12 PM for matters to be discussed within the limitations for closed deliberations as prescribed by Pennsylvania Act 93 of 1998. For this evening's meeting, there were personnel and litigation matters. Roll call, Board Secretary, Mr. Rogers, please.
Dr. Hague.
Present.
Mr. Desmond O'Ernest.
Present.
Mr. Neal.
Present.
Mr. War Savage. Mrs. Murphy Morrissey.
Present.
Mrs. Williams.
Present.
Mrs. Mitchell.
Present.
Mr. Fields.
Present.
Mr. Brown.
Present. Thank you, Mr. Rogers. The district posted this evening's agenda to board docs at least 24 hours prior to the commencement of this meeting. Is there a motion to approve that previously posted agenda? Thank you. Are there any amendments to offer?
There are no amendments.
The agenda has been moved and segmented. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carried. The minutes of the combined work session and regular meeting of April 11, 2023, and the special meeting of April 25, 25th, 2023 are in the hands of each board member and have been made available to the public. I move for their adoption. Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carried. The reporter to secretary, Director Williams, please.
The reporter to secretary is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carried. The reporter to treasurer, Director Neal.
Thank you, President Brown. Reporter to treasurer is in the hands of each board member, has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carried. We will now have the reporter to student representatives, Salma Gorfa and Khalid Dulett.
Good evening, Dr. McGary, Board President Brown, School Board Directors, and community members with us here in person, as well as those joining in from their homes. With the beginning of the final months leading up to graduation now upon us, the music department has been working tirelessly towards our final goal, the spring concerts. As we've seen before, we have changed the tradition of having one big concert to having two separate concerts showcasing both instrumental and choral programs. Mr. Ballard alongside his student teacher, Ms. Sellers, have been working with the instrumental students to prepare their annual spring concert to be held on May 25th at West Chester University. Ms. Nelson has also been working very diligently with the orchestra for the same concert on May 25th. Mr. Boucher once again has stepped up to the plate, finding blends of music across many different genres of music to create the exquisitely-directed choral concert, which will be performed on the 5th of June at West Chester University. Alongside our music programs, our sports teams have been also turning up the heat as they come to their final few weeks of their respective seasons. Recently, the boys' track team went to the Penn Relays, the largest track and field event in the United States. The boys' track team brought home medals and plaques for both the four-by-one, 100-meter and the four-by-400-meter relays. Congratulations to all of our senior athletes for a wonderful season across all of our sports, and now let's hear about our amazing clubs and organizations.
Good evening, board and community members. As we near the end of the academic year, I am pleased to report that the clubs and organizations at Upper Darby High School have been busy achieving great things. Our theater team's performance of Into the Woods was a resounding success, receiving six nominations and excellent reviews from the Greater Philadelphia Cappies. We are thrilled to announce that four of the performers were nominated for awards by the Greater Philadelphia Cappies, with winners set to be announced at their annual gala to be held on Sunday, May 21st at Cardinal O'Hara High School. Congratulations to all those who received a nomination for their outstanding work. On Saturday, April 29th, members of the UDHS Theater Community were inducted into the International Thespian Society Troop 4054, which is a demonstration of their dedication and talent. Meanwhile, our honor societies have been holding inductions for their new officers and wrapping up induction ceremonies, celebrating the hard work and achievements of our brightest, most dedicated, and service-oriented students. I am also pleased to announce, to report, that we have held our annual UD's Got Talent and Top Royal Events, which showcased the incredible talents of our Upper Darby High School students. As we approach the end of the academic year, our high school students and staff have been working tirelessly to plan an amazing prom experience for our juniors and seniors. In support of this effort, high school staff members have once again organized a prom gown boutique after school to find the outfit for the occasion at no cost to our students. Finally, I'm delighted to announce that the Muslim Student Association has recently participated in a halal food tasting organized with Aramark, our school's food service provider, to discuss and sample possible new halal options for our school menu. This is an important step towards promoting greater inclusivity and diversity within our school community. Once again, I would like to extend my congratulations to all of our hard-working students, dedicated staff members for their exceptional achievements, and thank you for allowing us to present this month's report.
Salma and Khalid always do a great job. It seems like the year just started when you started giving us these reports, and now the year's almost over, but thank you for your incredible work. The budgeted personnel and enrollment reports have been made available to the board and the public, and are recorded as part of the record. No vote is required. We will now have the reporter to the superintendent, Dr. Dan McGary.
Good evening, Board President Brown, members of the board administration, and everybody here who's in the community. Thanks for coming out. I'm sorry it's so warm in here. We have a lot going on, and we had some electrical problems at another building this morning that led to not getting the chillers turned on this morning early enough, so I apologize. Again, to Garretford Elementary School, to Alan, to the team, excellent job, really awesome presentation, all the technology we put forward here in the school district, and to Stonehurst, Desmond and the team, great job. It is so heartwarming to see all the good work that goes on in our classrooms every single day, so thank you for celebrating that work with the kids here in the community, and the, the fact that we're so receptive of one another is what always makes Upper Darby such a special place. This evening, I think many people are here not to hear me speak or to hear me talk about a budget or anything else that's going on. Obviously, we're here to recognize our student athletes, our musicians, our scientists, our poets, our award-winning teachers, and I will conclude with a minor update on the refining of our final budget for the 2223 school year, although by the time I get through over 70 certificates tonight, I'm not sure people will be paying attention to comments about the budget, so please be patient with me as we call forward our student athletes, our musicians, our poets, our scientists, and our teachers, that everybody gets to hear their name and their accomplishments. And we'll start with indoor sports season concluding. I saw LeVar in the hallway. He's going to be up here for a lot of awards, but LeVar Jackson, track and field, Upper Darby High School for being selected to the first team, all Delco in the 60-meter dash indoor track. As LeVar and his friends, teammates make their way up here. LeVar also placed fifth in the state in the 200 meters, eighth in the state in the 60-meter dash. LeVar also broke an Upper Darby High School indoor track record in the 60-meter dash and 200-meter dash. LeVar and his teammates, now you guys can come forward, Kamla Dean Abdubay, Abdul Sangre, and Omar Kengo also qualified for the indoor state championships in the four-by-200 relay. Congratulations. So I know you guys are going to get some other awards. We want to stay there for a second. So Kamla Dean, if you want to raise your hand and show everybody who you are. Upper Darby High School for being selected to the second team, all Delco, for the 60-meter dash competition. He's also honorable mention, all Delco, for the four-by-200 relay team, so congratulations on those other awards. And LeVar has been named honorable mention for the four-by-200 relay team, all Delco, and also for the 200-meter, LeVar, all Delco, for the boys' Delco championships at the race. So congratulations for breaking that record. Abdou Duliay and Sangre of Upper Darby High School for being named honorable mention, all Delco, four-by-200, if you want to come back up. Umarak Kengo, Upper Darby High School for being honorable mention, all Delco, four-by-200. Gabriella Fraylin, Upper Darby High School for being selected to the first team, all Delco Sports Team for girls' track. And Laura Lay Golombuski, Upper Darby High School for being selected to all Delco Team Sports for Girls' Track is honorable mention. So congratulations. We want to get a picture. We also, yep. We also had some, a lot of success at the Penn Relays. The high school team won their heat of the four-by-400 and brought home evidently a cookie. I'm sure there's an inside joke with the cookie. They also earned medals. The relay members were seniors LeVar Jackson, Jason Bateman, sophomore Kareem Good, and freshman Joshua Sharp. Are they all, they all here? No? Not all of them are here? Will you come up and be recognized again, LeVar? What's that? And LeVar, stay up there. Because also at the Penn Relays, LeVar was a part of the four by one hundred team that also consisted of Jason Bateman, Kamla Dean Abdubay, you're here, Andre Henigan ran the fastest time of all of the Delaware County teams. We'll see. The following Beverly Hills Middle School students earned third place in their heat and brought home bronze medals. Mustafa Dabo of Beverly Hills Middle School for qualifying for and meddling in the four by one hundred boys track relay at the 2023 Penn Relays. Carnival, anybody here? No? Oh, only one of them? Okay. James Myowa of Beverly Hills Middle School for qualifying for and meddling in the four by one hundred track relay at the 2023 Penn Relays Carnival. Zachary Yakobu of Beverly Hills Middle School, same four by one hundred boys track relay, and then Sahid Wallace for the four by one hundred Beverly Hills. Sahad? Onto the hardwood and basketball award winners. So Nadir Myers of Upper Darby High School for being selected to the all Central First Team, all Delco Sports First Team Boys Basketball. I know Coach is here. Nadir was also selected for, as the Pennsylvania Sports Writers' Second All-State for Boys Basketball. Coach, if you want to come up and be recognized, if he's not here, are they here? Okay, why don't we, all right, why don't we bring them in as well with you, Coach? This is Coach Miller. Also, Namir, you're on the left, if you'll raise your hand. Namir Brown, both for being selected as honorable mention, all Central, and honorable mention, all Delco for Boys Basketball. Yassir Joyner, also honorable mention, all Delco, third team for Boys Basketball. Congratulations to Yassir. Krishwan Kane, honorable mention, all Delco, Boys Basketball, and then also Kishir Slaughter, who also finished honorable mention for Boys Basketball. Congratulations, Coach Miller and the team. Unbelievable, historic year for the league. Thank you. Girls Basketball Award winners. Cassandra Jones, Upper Darby High School for being selected, all Delco, honorable mention. Come on up. So you were all Delco and also honorable mention, all Central League, so congratulations. Mia Wilson was also recognized for her play in basketball, all Delco honorable mention for Girls Basketball, and Central and all Delco honorable mention. Wrestling Award winners. Mama Day Trower of Upper Darby High School for being selected all Central Team, second team for wrestling. I don't know if you're here. No? And then Nathan O'Donnell, Upper Darby High School for being selected all Central, third team for wrestling. Congratulations to our wrestlers. We'll make sure to get those awards to them. Boy Swimming and Diving Award winners. Gabrielle Green of Upper Darby High School for being selected all Central First Team, Boy Swimming and Diving. Connor Hunt, Upper Darby High School, all Central, second team, Boy Swimming and Diving. Connor Hunt, also all Delco honorable mention for Boy Swimming and Diving. Congratulations. Luke Olmstead for recognition as all Central Second Team, Boy Swimming. Luke has also been recognized as all Delco honorable mention, so all Delco honorable mention swimming as well and diving. Sebastian Vale, Upper Darby High School for being selected all Central as an honorable mention for Boy Swimming and Diving. Sebastian? And John McCarthy, Upper Darby High School for being selected to the all Central as an honorable mention for Boy Swimming. I don't know if John's here. Sure. Coach, when we're finished, if you want to come up with everybody who is here, we can get a picture with you as well, okay? And then I heard it was Gabe. Gabe Green, Upper Darby High School for being selected, all Delco, honorable mention, Boy Swimming and Diving. Now to our Girls Swimming and Diving Award winners. The Olmstead family's got a lot of good stuff going on. Elise Olmstead, Upper Darby High School. Selected all Central as honorable mention for Girl Swimming, and also selected honorable mention, all Delco, Girl Swimming. Congratulations, Elise. Gabriella Fiorentino Wong of Upper Darby High School. All Central is an honorable mention for Girl Swimming and Diving. Congratulations. Yep. Kayla Ward, Upper Darby High School for being selected, Kyla, sorry. All Delco is honorable mention, Girl Swimming and Diving. Now, look, it's one thing to be a successful athlete. It's another thing to balance student athletes, so being a student and being an athlete. And so Luke Olmstead, Connor Hunt, and Grace Colodey of Upper Darby High School, congratulations for being recognized as the National Interscholastic Swimming Coaches Association Academic All-Americans. I see our wonderful Drexel Middle School Jazz Fest teacher. So Jason, whenever you feel comfortable to come up with the kids, that'd be great, but Drexel Middle School Jazz Band for earning superior rating for Best Rhythm Section and Saxophone at the 202223 Strathhaven Middle School Band Jazz Fest. Come on up. While, while we're clapping for them, they also won Drexel Middle School for the Best Rhythm Sections at the Berks County Jazz Fest. We're not finished. Yep. This group also won superior rating at the Drexel Hill Middle School Jazz Fest, and a superior rating at the Springton Lake Middle School. Sounds like, Jay, you've had a clean sweep. You might not get, you might not be invited back. Coach Mom just reminded me, Gabby, if you want to come forward, I understand indoor 800, you broke a, almost over twenty-year Upper Darby High School record, correct? Come on up. It's phenomenal. So after Drexel Hill Middle School, we're on to the PMEA Fifth and Sixth Ensembles. So congratulations to the following students for being selected to perform in the 2223 PMEA Pennsylvania Music Educators Association Fifth and Sixth String Fest. And there's, there's several people will be calling for it. Mayank Baines, Upper Darby, I'm sorry, Walter M. Senko Elementary School. Peyton Conway of Walter M. Senko Elementary School. Christian Makandu, Walter Senko Elementary School. Elena Butler of Garaford Elementary School. Jeffrey George of Garaford Elementary School. Benjamin Harkness of Hillcrest Elementary School. Leo Ike State of Drexel Hill Middle School. I hope I didn't mispronounce that. Clifton Langston of Drexel Hill Middle School. Lucas Lynn of Beverly Hills Middle School. Maxim Ganges of Beverly Hills Middle School. And Olivia Fiorentino of Beverly Hills Middle School. Congratulations to the following students for being selected to perform in the 2223 PMEA Fifth and Sixth Grade Band, also Elena Butler of Garaford Elementary School, and Jeffrey George. And Miko Rodriguez of Garaford. Is Miko here? No? Now, grades seven and eight, PMEA String Fest 2223. So congratulations to following award winners. Bryn Zimmerman. Keira Ward. Both of Drexel Hill Middle School. Mateo Fiorentino Wong of Beverly Hills Middle School. And again, Bryn Zimmerman of Drexel Hill Middle School. Okay, I'm told one more. Antina Latarsia? Atanella? Sorry. Onto our scientists, the Delaware Valley Science Fair. Maude Toronto, Upper Darby High School in recognition of earning second place at the 75th Delaware Valley Science Fair in the ninth grade division in the category of Earth Space Science. Come on up. Congratulations. And then I'm told the following award honors students' research that relates to lubrication or corrosion prevention. Keano Shaw of Upper Darby High School, here or not here? No? And Josiah Sadek, is Josiah here? Upper Darby High School earning first place at the 75th Delaware Valley Science Fair, 12th grade division in Earth Space Science. Congratulations to Josiah. Josiah also won a special award known as the Dietrich Bostbiber Foundation Award for Engineering at the Engineering Fair. So Josiah, good things are ahead. Hope you can solve some of our world's problems with your, with your talents. Delaware County Libraries and Mad Poets Society. So now we're on to our poets, 34th Annual Young Poets Awards. William Job Jones-Wait. William, if you're here? Not here? Okay. Amber Thompson. And then Namir Ibrahim. Is Namir, Namir here? No? And then we have a pretty, pretty special award, the Delaware County Right to Education Local Task Force Making a Difference Award. The Making Difference Award is an annual event sponsored by the Delaware County's Right to Education Local Task Force. The event recognizes outstanding individuals who meet one of the following criteria. Students who have persevered and overcome challenges to be successful within an inclusive setting. Students who have demonstrated exceptional support, friendships, acceptance, and understanding to ensure the inclusion of classmates of all abilities. Also, adults who have demonstrated extraordinary efforts through their exceptional work to promote acceptance and understanding to ensure the inclusion of all children of all abilities. And then student and staff winners from all Delaware County schools were recognized last week at the Marple Newtown High School. So congratulations to these award winners. Our student award winner is Peyton Conaway, Upper Darby High School. So congratulations. We also have two teachers, Alina Debona and Mary Hennessy. Come on up. Alina Debona is an autistic support teacher at Primus Elementary School, and Ms. Hennessy is a general education teacher at Primus Elementary School. Congratulations to all of you. No, come on, stay up there. So congratulations. And as I thought, we probably should have gone over the last part of this update with everybody in the room, but anyway, congratulations to all of our students, their families, to our teachers, and to this board. All of your hard work goes into a lot with the success of our students in the classroom. Just want to provide a reminder that the administration will continue to refine the 222324 final budget prior to final approval by the board. Want to make sure that we're all aware that the April 25 Finance and Operations Committee meeting that was public, we provided that we needed five EL teachers that we put into the budget for this year, seven elementary reading specialists, six building technicians, a supervisor of guidance, a supervisor of elementary instructional technology, restructuring of a position to add a new Upper Darby High School Assistant Principal, and redesigning an administrative position to create a supervisor of secondary instructional technology. So Board President Brown, I want to thank you and the Board of School Directors, our staff, our students, and our families for their patience and engagement. We will continue to do our best to support the needs of our entire community. Board President Brown, this concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. McGary. Thank you, Dr. McGary, for that comprehensive report. It's clear that academics and athletics flourish in Upper Darby, so thank you for acknowledging all of our scholars and athletes. We will now have an update on the April 25, 2023 Education and People's Services Committee meeting. Director Williams will read the summary.
Thank you. We had a few agenda items that evening. The first one was the adoption of planned instruction. We did have board action on that via a special voting meeting. So from that first agenda item, there was a TAPS team in police service item. Mrs. Simone provided an update for us. The Upper Darby Police Superintendent was there as well, Superintendent Bernhardt, as well as Upper Darby Police Sergeant Steven was there that night. So they presented a project to us from the Upper Darby High School curriculum. It was a high school course for students in ninth through 12th grade. The presentation just discussed the benefits and opportunities for students in that program to positively interact with local law enforcement. Again, this item was for board action, and there was a special voting meeting that evening. The second item was digital citizenship, where Mr. Robert Swartz presented adjustments to the sixth grade business computer and information technology required elective to include topics included in digital citizenship and information and media literacy. The presentation also included a recommendation for resource materials to cover these topics. All appropriate ARs, I'm sorry, have been completed, and they're available in board docs. The second item was an MOU with police and school safety committee. That item was informational. The third item was UDSD Special Education Plan. Mr. Marshalec reviewed the final version of the district's special education plan as required by chapters four and 14. The plan was made public for a 28-day review. Any suggestions or questions from the public were considered in the final document. This plan was for board action. Public comments were, were that night, agenda for agenda item number one, the speaker asked if students would be selected or referred to the TAPS program. Another item where a speaker stated they thought the TAPS program was great, and then another item, agenda item where a speaker asked if things could be expanded on when discussing proper funding. And that concludes my summary.
Thank you, Director Williams. We will now have an update on the April 25, 2023 Finance and Operations Committee meeting. Director Vice President Fields will read the summary.
Thank you, Board President Brown. The Finance and Operations Committee meeting followed the Education and People's Services Committee Tuesday, April 25 at 7:00 PM. There was one agenda item, the 2023-2024 Proposed Final Budget required board action. In compliance with the Act One timeline, Mr. Rogers presented the 2023-2024 Proposed General Fund Budget. Administration asked the board to consider this budget for approval at the May 9, 2023 board meeting. The final budget presentation will be on June 20, 2023, which will incorporate any legislative and/or internal changes. There were three public comments related to funding, school staffing, and busing, very general comments, and that is everything for the Finance and Operations Committee meeting.
Thank you, Director Vice President Fields. We'll move on to the Instruction and Curriculum Report. Back to you, Director Fields.
Thank you. The Instruction and Curriculum Report- Thank you. The Instruction and Curriculum Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the, to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye. Oppose, then state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carried. And now we'll go to the Personnel Report. Director Mitchell.
Thank you, President Brown. The Personnel Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. Before I move for its adoption, I wanted to wish our three retirees a safe and healthy retirement. Thank you for your years of service to the Upper Darby community. I also wanted to recognize in this report that we have a number of new appointments and I just want to welcome you to the Upper Darby family. I also wanted to recognize all the teachers who are stepping up to work our summer programs. We have some amazing summer programs and I just want to thank everyone who's planning them and all the teachers and staff that are working them. I think our kids are going to be so blessed this summer. And I wanted to recognize that we, tonight in this report, we are ratifying a contract with our Udespa group. It is a five-year agreement and it was, I believe unanimously passed just recently, I think on Thursday night. So I just want to congratulate all the staff for their five-year contract and all of those who worked on it to come to a great deal for our staff. And with all that being said, I move for the adoption of the report as stated.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Director Neal?
Just a quick comment. It was overwhelmingly supported, not unanimous. Yeah.
Correcting.
Make sure.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public?
Lee Jordan, 90 Pilgrim Lane. You know, every time I read the Personnel Report, I'm always saddened seeing the retirements and the resignations, but also thrilled to see like the hiring of like Kelsey Carr, who graduated from Upper Darby with my daughter. So bringing students back into the school district. But just a little bit concerned, though, when I look at resignations of like the Assistant Principal of Beverly Hills, who's only been here three years, and also our Supervisor of Online Learning, you know, who's been here since 2007. I remember when she took on this whole project. And I know our administrative salaries, because I looked up, the Assistant Principal one started at $93,800. And, you know, back in the day, the Supervisor of Online Learning was like $92,000. So, you know, I guess my question is, is, and I know you can't answer it, but I assume that we're competitive with administrative salaries, because I know if we were paying teachers close to $93,000, they probably, you know, wouldn't be leaving and would be staying on. But it is concerning to know why, you know, somebody who had only been here three years is, is leaving the district. So I know you can't answer it, but I mean, that's something that I guess maybe when we get into like the, you know, down the road when you do the exit interviews, I'd be interested to know. I mean, maybe are the salaries higher outside for administrative jobs? I really don't know. That's it.
Joanne Amavong, 133 North Pennic. I just have a question for the ratification of the contract. Is that contract available for the public to see online?
Tonight is comment only, but we'll be happy to answer that question.
Oh, I thought this was back and forth at these.
The committee meetings are, these are comment.
Okay, okay. Secondly, the other thing, and I know you're not going to answer it, but so if you approve this motion, or the motion that you just made, to approve this report, does that approve the contract, or is that a separate approval?
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other comments from the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye. Oppose, then state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carried. Move on to the Policy Report.
So there is, there are five policies undergoing a first reading this evening. And although no vote is required, I would like to give a brief summary of, of the changes.
Please.
So Policies 131.7, 130, sorry, 137.1, 137.2, and 137.3 are all related to home education, otherwise known as homeschooling, and are necessary due to changes in Pennsylvania law. Policy 201, Admission of Students, is being updated due to the, or to be in conformance with the change in compulsory school age in Pennsylvania. And Policy 206, the policy language itself isn't changing, but the attachments are being updated to reflect the revised catchment areas due to the board's vote last month to merge Sankow with Aaronamink. That ends my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. That's no errors. And my apologies for skipping that. We had, thanks for taking us through the first reading. We have nothing in the second reading at this time. So. The Supplies Report, Director Fields.
Thank you, Board President Brown. The Supplies Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye. Oppose, then state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carried. The Transportation Report, Director Williams.
Thank you. The Transportation Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board?
Just want to acknowledge that we're getting finally a real bus app that's going to actually tell us exactly where the buses are and where we can expect them. And as someone who's wondered where my kids are, I'm excited about this. I know parents will be really excited to see it. And, and along with the accompanying technological updates to the buses. So this is a step forward and that's exciting.
Excellent. Thank you for pointing that out. That's, that's a big one. Are there any other comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye. Oppose, then state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carried. The Facilities, the Use of Facilities, and the Donation Report, Director Murphy Morrissey.
Thank you, Board President Brown. The Facilities Report, the Use of Facilities Report, and the Donation Report are in the hands of each board member and have been made.
Can you get a little closer to the microphone?
And have been made available to the public. I move for their adoption.
Second.
Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye. Oppose, then state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carried. The Food Services Report, Director Fields.
The Food Services Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye. Oppose, then state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carried. The Finance and Budget Report, Director Dr. Haig.
Thank you, President Brown. The Finance and Budget Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye. Oppose, then state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carried. And now we'll have our collateral assignment reports. We will start with Delaware County Community College. Director Fields.
Thank you, Board President Brown. I don't have much of a report. There was a groundbreaking May 6 for the, the campus to be held on the, to be built on the Bon Appétit campus. I was not able to attend. I had work commitments. I know Board President.
Director Murphy Morrissey and I were there. And Dr. McGary was also there. So Dr. McGary, you want to comment on it if you want to?
In full, in full honesty, I threw some clothes on that were in the back of my truck. I was at a baseball game and ran over. I got to meet a grandchild, Christopher. And people were looking at me like 10 heads, but it looked pretty cool that we're going to have the awesome Delaware County Community College. A lot of shovels that were there, a lot of people with a shovel. But it's a pretty exciting project.
Director Murphy Morrissey.
I echo those sentiments. It was a very, very exciting day for our community and what opportunities that's going to bring to our community as a whole. Limiting barriers and removing barriers, eliminating barriers for students by having, not having to travel all the way to the other side of Delaware County and having, the importance of having Delaware County Community College right here in Upper Darby for all of the students and all the families that need access, transportation, access to the school, Upper Darby High School, Bon Appétit High School, and all the other resources right here in the community. So it was a really good day for Upper Darby.
Thank you. As a sponsoring district of Delaware County Community College, I was happy, you know, our district was there and represented. And as a big proponent of dual enrollment, which we have a lot of students, most of their students that take advantage of dual enrollment come from Upper Darby, we're happy to see that campus close by and convenient for students. So we really will expect our numbers to increase even more. So it was a great, great day. Anything else, Director Fields?
I have nothing else for that.
Okay, thank you. The Delaware County Intermediate Unit, Director Mitchell.
Thank you, President Brown. The Delaware County Intermediate Unit Board of School Directors met last Wednesday for its regular board meeting. It was normal business. There was no, nothing really to highlight from that. We do, I do meet with the Policy Council of Head Start. And as you know, the IU, I think I've talked about this in the past, is applying for the award again for Head Start. Tomorrow morning, we are meeting with the parents at the Morton Center. And someone from the state will be there to talk to the parents. So I think that's a great opportunity for them. But that's really it. And we have our committee meeting also tomorrow night.
Thank you, Director Mitchell. Legislative Council, Director Ward Savage is under the weather, so he's not here. He does normally do a detailed report for that, so.
Yeah, I looked into, I looked into what was on the agenda. There's a, there's a couple items that Harrisburg is taking up. And I wanted to mention these because I love when Harrisburg follows Upper Darby's lead. And there are three bills. SB 114, Firefighter Training Pilot Program for High School Students, which sounds very familiar to something that we're doing in our district. So I commend that. State Rep. Brooks, I don't know his first name, for raising that. There's not a lot of money here. This legislation would award three grants of $150,000 each, which would be distributed in three community colleges across Commonwealth, Western, Central, Eastern. So hopefully Delaware County gets, gets one of those. But I just, I just was kind of thrilled to see that stuff that we're already working on is being taken up by the state. Another example is House Bill 100. This is a tutoring program. This amends the public school code, providing for tutoring program and will require the State Board of Education to establish a tutoring program whereby students in 11th and 12th grades may tutor pupils in grades one through six. The participating tutors will receive academic credit for their services. And I think we are, I know we're doing a mentoring. I know one of these meetings recently, we discussed having our, our juniors and seniors help with the kids in, in the earlier grades. So I think that's great. And if we can get credit for, if they can get graduation credit for that, all the better. And then Grow Our Own Educators, this is House Bill 141. This establishes a program to provide financial assistance, including pathways for educators, and legislation to help support high, high need schools in geographic areas that have hardest staff or teaching positions. And this requires Department of Education to provide funding for grants and, and all the logistical work that goes around creating these grants. So I know we're also already doing a program about getting our graduates, when they become teachers, to come back to Upper Darby. So I just think that was great. And then this fourth one is separate from those, but I, I know Dr. Haig would be thrilled to hear about it. It's House Bill 137, proposed by Elizabeth Fiedler. She's in Philadelphia. Solar for Pennsylvania Schools. And the long and short of it is she wants, I don't think this will happen, but she wants to appropriate $500 million to the Department of Education for Pennsylvania to go to the schools so they can put solar panels on their roofs and things like that. And it's always been kind of a goal, because there's a lot of unused space there, but the money's never been there. I doubt 500 million would go into the program, but if half that does, I think that'd be a step in the right direction. And, and that's everything. How that report, there is a Legislative Council Breakfast the 15th, I think it's the 15th.
19th.
19th, thank you. That Director Ward Savage was reminding people about, and now I'm putting it on record and reminding you about it. So that's everything for that.
Thank you, Director Fields. And I think Michelle Brooks was the name you was looking for, first name of that.
Okay.
Thank you for that. The Mendon Hall Tyson Scholarship Committee, Director Haig.
Thank you, President Brown. We actually met just this morning, right over in this room. And we, I'm not at liberty to, to name the recipients this year. Of course, they'll be announced at the Senior Awards in, in June. But as usual, really amazing students, you know, scholar, athlete, people involved in service projects and science projects. And it's, it's just amazing. Thankfully, we let them sleep in a little bit now, because I don't know how, how they find enough hours in a day to do all of these things. But the good news is, after taking a pretty big financial hit, the, the funds for the committee have, have rebounded as, as Wall Street has in general a little bit. So we're in somewhat better position, but it's still just the plan to give three scholarships at $8,000 each. And then, of course, we also got an update on the past year's scholars who are in college. And then going all the way back to one student who was in the class of 2017. It happens every once in a while that, that the students are already getting their undergraduate career funded by other scholarships, but they accept the Mendon Hall Tyson money as money that they'll use toward their, their professional school, for example, usually medical school, including, I believe, our very own Umay Sidiqua is in that position. So she's at UPenn right now, but plans to go to medical school. So anyway, just great to hear how well everyone is doing. And I'm excited for the, the awards night and to hear even more about how amazing our students are.
Thank you for that great report. Sure. Dr. McGary.
Dr. Haig and I and Dr. Kelly were also tasked a little bit with, Council didn't make it this morning. He had something else going on. But we had, in the conversation this morning, the 100-year anniversary is coming up. We think it's 2028.
Wow.
So we're going to try to plan something special in the new, kind of a reunion, bring back, and then try to turn it into kind of, we're going to try to plan it out in advance, almost an assembly for our kids to have these, all of these award winners historically come back, share with our students and share with everybody what's going on. As Dr. Haig said, it's pretty amazing to hear and keep up with what the kids, we get letters from the kids each year, and how many of them are so successful in what they're doing, to come back and invite them back, to give back to our kids and tell our kids what happened, how you go about this scholarship was important. And also was another comment that was made each year, former board member Judy Gentile is a member of the Mendon Hall Tyson Scholarship Committee. And she, she always makes it a point to bring this up. Here in this community, when scholarship time comes around, typically, high schools celebrate the scholarship money that kids earn from these universities or the colleges they're attending. What's unique about Upper Darby is there's over 400, was it 400, I think? $400,000 that are residents and past alum, not just scholarships the kids are earning, but, you know, over $400,000 each year given to, to students of Upper Darby School District. And it's been going on for a long time. So it's really cool to carve out some time during the day to hear these positive, positive stories. At one time, Dr. Haig and I were, were told today, and Dr. Kelly, that the meetings used to involve Fine China. Now, there's a scone.
Wow, that's awesome. Well, that's awesome. Home and School was next. Director War Savage is not here. Dr. McGary, can you speak to Home and School? You are always involved with that.
Yeah, we have a meeting coming up, typically the Monday prior to a committee meeting. So off the top of my head, whatever that Monday would be, we'll be putting out an invitation for another district-wide Home and School meeting the Monday prior to the committee meeting for May, and then probably have one more in June before we close out the school year. And Mr. War Savage, remember War Savage and I will certainly provide an update, and I'll provide the agenda to the board in advance as well.
Thank you. Thank you for that. PSBA, Director Desnoyers or Director Williams, anything from PSBA at this time?
So I feel like PSBA isn't having the monthly webinar, you know, they, since I guess we're out of the pandemic now or whatever, they're not having the extra monthly webinars. So there's not that to report on, and I've been keeping my eye on their emails for interesting things. They are having a, they are having an upcoming webinar with details about the school safety and security plan, or rather, not the safety and security plan, the safety report that has to be filed with the state. I'm going to try to make that.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that. And they do have a few things on their radar and the School Solicitors Symposium, I'm not sure, okay, in July, and then they have the COSBA Urban Board Alliance, which, which there was an item about, you know, there was a workshop that we went to about the Urban Board Alliance, we went to the conference, but they have a follow-on to that in August 24th and August 25th. So again, over the summer. So I think that's it for PSBA at this time. Policy, anything, anything policy lays on us?
Just, I think there will be some, some type of, I've heard there's going to be an additional presentation and/or discussion of use of facilities. So that's on the radar.
Yep.
And that's really all I had.
Thank you. Thank you. Communications, Directors Haig or Mitchell, anything?
I just want to remind everyone again that we do send out a monthly update. Thank you to Aron W. Buford for helping the board with that. Director Haig is always, she gets the summary really well and when we add a few things. So if there's anything that you want to see added into the communication report, I think that would be really great. I also wanted to thank Dr. Haig for organizing the school board chats. She has done a phenomenal job with that, and I think it's been a benefit to the community. I know I've had some good conversations at events that I've been at, so I just wanted to thank you. And thank you for the board, for everyone who's participating. I think it's been a good thing, and I hope we can continue it into the future.
Thank you. Upper Darby Arts and Education Foundation, Director Murphy Morrissey.
Thank you. The UDE AEF Board will meet tomorrow, Thursday, May 11th at 6:30. We will discuss typical board business, bylaws, board policies, this service club, students, which there are over 200 now. They will receive their awards. The Upper Darby Collaborative will be discussed, the Shriners 5K, which is on Saturday, May 20th, Summer Stage, and Shooting Stars. That ends my report.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next, is there any old business from board members? Okay, hearing none. Is there any new business from board members? Hearing none. We are now at the time for the public hearing. We will call on Upper Darby School District residents who sign in to address the board in the order in which they signed in, followed by emailed and phoned comments. We would ask that you come forward, give your name and address, and present your comments in the three-minute time limit. In accordance with Policy 903, the time allotted for general comments, both in person and submitted comments, will not exceed one hour.
Thank you, President Brown. Lee Jordan, 9280 Lane, Drexel Hill. A few things this evening. First of all, just to talk about logistics about this evening. So when I got here, you know, the hallway was full with at least 20, 30 people, and we were told to go to the overflow room, which was room 100 behind the Performing Arts Center. So when I got in there, there was parents with a child getting recognized, and another set of parents. And I'm like, well, I think you're supposed to be in the other room. And they're like, no, we're getting, it's going to be streamlined. Regardless, a child came back. The parents were sitting there. Thank God, Joanne texted me when the meeting started. So there was never stream, streaming happening in room 100. So I guess, as we know as a board, whenever students are getting recognized, it's always crowded, which is a good thing, right? But I guess it needs to be a little bit more organized. And I know moving forwards, we'll have a different venue, but that's just something to think about. Because I would have been heartbroken if those parents missed seeing their children, because they actually all took off work today to see them. Something else, my neighbor Julia Ryan, who's a librarian here at the high school, is heading the prom dress donation along with the French teacher from St. Wright, Ms. Gabriella. And A.G. Bianchi has done it for years. And so when I was talking to her and I dropped off some dresses, she was just telling me how an overwhelming response that she received from the community. And I told her I would mention some of the names of the people who made donations. My Closet, which is on Firm Boulevard, and the owner is Brenda Wilson. She donated dresses along with Wilhelmina Scarpone, who is the Accents Boutique that used to be on Gat Road, which is now part of My Closet. And Desiree Hayton, if I'm saying that right, she donated 50 dresses that were collected by, at her church, which is St. Peter's Episcopal Church, which is in Phoenixville. Kate Long, a lot of teachers, Sandy Mata, and who else? I should make sure I didn't forget anybody, because she was sending me names. Anyway, it was an overwhelming response, and she said the kids are really responding well to it. The third thing I want to talk about is the school bus safety program, and I'm not sure if our district does it or not, but I was doing some research. I know the Rose Tree Media School District does it, and it's through a grant, and basically it's cameras on buses, right, when people illegally pass a bus. However, there are pretty hefty fines, right? So it's a $300 fine, and it gets sent to you. But what I think is a good benefit is $250 of that fine goes to the school district, and then 25 goes to the police department, and then 25 goes back to the school bus safety grant program. But I was thinking, you know, just another way to make money in the community. Oh, and I guess my, my last comment is the stonework on Aronimic Elementary School. I actually think it looks amazing. But I, I mean, if I didn't know, I would never be able to tell the old versus the new. So, you know, I guess kudos to the architect, never been involved in that. But that's it.
Sue Parker, 2104 Green Hill Road, post office lands down Upper Darby Township since 1978, a mother of a 99 graduating in 2002. And so this is my last historical perspective, firsthand experience. And I started, and my three minutes were up, but I mentioned that Dr. Dunlop had this plan, and he came in with fresh eyes and saw the amount of money spent on busing for 18 years. He said, we could have built many schools with that. And so it would be a little rough, but he did have a plan to build a school in the Cardington section. And he's, that's a moot point now, but if he'd stayed, this would not even be an issue. And, but I did drive past Aronimic, and now there's a huge addition in a least densely populated area with a highly parochial school neighborhood. And I'm hoping that you're not thinking, this is a solution for the kids from the other side of the township to stay there forever. Because it isn't. It isn't. That's not their neighborhood, and there's no way that neighborhood, that Aronimic, is ever going to fill that school. So I'm a little disturbed, thinking that you're thinking this is a solution to that. But, but anyway, so just in saying, the two women who spoke last time had their comments read in, I was a little concerned because she kept referring to the other school, couldn't that other school, both of them, could the other school stay one more year? These are kids who have been bused for 18 years, you know. Anyway, I just think, you know, kids get their parent, the vibes from their parents, and I'm just wondering how welcome these kids, my neighborhood and, and the kids are going to be welcomed. I think kids are going to be thinking this is the other school, because I'm telling you, kids are smart, they pick up their parents' vibes. So I was a little disturbed by that. And so, anyway, and you know, that father whose daughter was beat up, you know, she's Colombian. So I do think there are issues that some people, to me, that was a little like white privilege, I'm sorry, for her to be concerned that it would be a disadvantage for her children to have them come now when, if the building wasn't completely ready. So anyway, so my summary is, we talk about equity, but I think we need to look about equity in the district. Cardington's enrollment went down, they closed the school. Aronimic's enrollment went down, they moved the administration building there. I know because I went for one whole year, you used to have the program meetings the week before, so I went the week before and went to all the committee meetings, and then I went to the next week to all the meetings, because my kids were at Bywood right then, and we needed an addition. So I attended two meetings a month for the whole school year, and that was there. So, and I was at another meeting, the one after Dr. Dunlop vanished, and some woman got up and said, some woman from Aronimic, I'm sorry, got up and said, well, I think children should be able to walk to their school. And I had already signed in to speak, so I was able to get up behind her and say, my neighborhood's been bused for 45 years.
Joanne Namavong, 133 North Pennock Avenue. This question is for all of you, if you could just think about these questions I'm asking. So when you were all in high school, were you allowed to attend school for a full day for four school, for four full years? And when you were in high school, were you allowed to eat lunch in the cafeteria with your friends? And when you were in high school, were your parents allowed to attend your graduation? Then moving on, about this meeting tonight. Like Lee said, when I got here, I couldn't barely make it into the room to sign in. And many people were relegated to the hallway. I counted at least 40 people that were in the hallway. Some livestreamed it on their phone. We couldn't hear or see anything. And that doesn't make it a public meeting. This was not a public meeting. I heard through the livestream, some little snippets where you were going through the things before the superintendent report, the ones where you had motions, the finance, I don't remember which ones they were, curriculum, instruction or curriculum, no, it was before that. Anyway, there were two reports that you called for public comment. Nobody in that hallway could make a public comment if they had chosen to do so. So if you're going to have honorees, which I think it's great, but all those of us in the hall couldn't enjoy that presentation. We couldn't see any of the honorees. We couldn't participate. You know you were going to have a lot of people here tonight. You needed to plan better and have a different venue. We have a school at Beverly Hills Middle School. We have a auditorium at Drexel Hill Middle School. We have other places that you go to move this to. As a matter of fact, some of the senior night and all the underclassmen awards are going to be done in the gym. There are other facilities in this building. Yes, it's going to be hot, but I think when you exclude members of the public, it's just, it's bad, and it gives, it just makes me very upset. Thank you.
Ms. Buford, are there any online comments?
Yes, we have one comment. This comment is from Gretchen Ippok, a parent of four Upper Darby School District students. This parent is located at 1100 Cornell Avenue in Drexel Hill. Comment was received on the 25th at 12:30 PM via email. It is a general comment. The comment reads, Dear UD School Board, I read a post on a community Facebook group yesterday asking for opponents of Administration Regulation 103 AR2 gender expansive and transgender procedures to attend the board meeting on May 9th, 2023 and speak up. This regulation was passed on September 8th, 2020. Due to my employment, I am not available that evening to counteract potential negative speech on this topic. I would like the following supportive comments written to the record as a general comment at the May 9th meeting. All of the students in the Upper Darby School District are valuable members of our community. We pride ourselves on our diversity, and that diversity includes gender nonconforming students. These students are not located in some remote imaginary land. These students live here, attend our schools, participate in community activities, play on teams, join clubs, and hold after-school jobs, just like everyone else. Gender nonconforming kids deserve to be treated in a manner that is respectful, affirming, and healthy for them. It is my hope that all students experience this in both our schools and their homes, because their mental and physical health and safety depends on it. At school, gender nonconforming students should be allowed to use their preferred name and pronouns, wear the clothing of their choice within the school dress code, and have access to appropriate bathrooms and locker rooms, just like any other student. I affirm the right of gender nonconforming students to exist safely in our schools. All kids are our kids. End of comment.
Thank you, Ms. Buford. Are there any others? You said that was the only one?
That is the last comment for this evening.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion for the adjournment of the meeting?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned. Have a good night, everyone.